All right, I'm gonna call this meeting back to order. Uh, next item on our agenda is old business, 2018-2019 calendar changes, Appendix G, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higgins. Um, if we will bring up the graphic.
While they're doing that, what Dr. Smith will be presenting tonight are two options related to hurricane makeup. We got a lot of feedback from parents, teachers, uh, always entertaining. And as I tell folks, you cannot win the weather, so, uh, our initial recommendation probably would have been for 20 minutes, but I'm gonna, when she gets to the breakdown, based on all the feedback we got, the five days at the end, to me seems like the most reasonable option, but I'll let her, uh, talk about it.
Yes, yes. So, um, as Dr. Markley said, we did get a lot of input and I do want to thank those folks who took the ti- the time to share, um, their views and their insights in regards to the calendars, because they were able to offer their input from their perspective and that is extremely important to us. Um, and as a result of that, we are bringing to you, to some degree, two sets of calendars and, um, will, um, make a recommendation for your approval of, of what are those sets, based on the discussion that we have this evening. So, for the first calendar that you see in front of you now, it is essentially asking that we change half-days to full-days for the traditional calendar. Um, that would be 10/26, which we've already done, um, December 20th, the, um, February 22nd and April 5th. We're adding back two vacation days, that would be December 21st and April 22nd, and then we would be adding 10 minutes to the beginning and ending of the school day. Um, this does have an impact on other calendars because of our busing system, how we transport children to and from school. So even though we would only be asking for that additional time to the traditional school calendar, by default, it would impact C-Tech, it would also impact WECs. Um, so again, we're not asking that time to be added to their calendar, but, um, by default, it, it would be. Um, if you look at the calendar, the letter, excuse me, the numbers that are in red, um, we notate it that way so that the public and you and teachers would be, um, um, cognizant of which days were missed, so, so in red are the student days that, that were missed. And as Dr. Markley shared earlier today, College Park actually returned on October the, the 8th. So that would be one possibility for the traditional calendar. Um, if you will scroll down. Okay, so the second option for the traditional calendar would include all of the information that I've set, shared with you thus far, um, but not include the additional 10 minutes to the beginning and the ending of the school day. What it would do instead, it would move the end date for the traditional school year calendar um, to June 13th. So we would finish our school year for traditional students on June 13th. Um, we are also proposing that we would not shift graduation. Um, now this calendar does indicate that graduation would be on June 15th, but I've been in communication with, um, our friendly folks at the Department of Public Instruction and, um, we are working with them so that we would not have to shift graduation. So our seniors would be able to still graduate, um, and I have to look and reference so I make sure I get the dates correct, on June 8th. What it would mean however, is that we would have to receive permission, um, to test those seniors early. So they would still fall under the state requirements, um, for testing, specifically North Carolina final exams, because those final exams do count 20% of their final grade, but it would be our desire, our recommendation, to be able to, to test those specific students early. So they would be able to graduate on time, because we realized that families have already made plans for graduation, but all other students, the school year would end on June 13th.
You must be pretty confident that you'll get granted that request.
I am, I am. I will say that our State Superintendent, Mark Johnson, has been, um, extremely supportive of us and, and so, in helping us navigate these waters, they've made adjustments in requirements related to beginning of the year testing for third graders and also they've made changes for, not only in Hanover County, but across the region for those impacted, um, in terms of testing windows. So, um, the Department of Public Instruction and specifically the State Superintendent has been extremely supportive and offered and provided to us as many flexibilities as possible.
Wouldn't we be losing more instructional time if they're gonna test early and they're still gonna graduate on time? And these days wouldn't benefit them after the graduation, right?
I would agree completely with you. The only other option would be to move graduation, um, or to graduate our students and seniors and then have them to come back after graduation and take the test. And the likelihood that that would happen, um, probably not.
I would tell you, a lot of districts traditionally, before testing became very, uh, as it is now, would graduate their seniors before the end of the year.
But we're losing more instructional time, aren't we?
Yeah, for that group of seniors, there, there's no way to make that, that time up. But I know when I was a principal and company-
Oh, just drop it for everybody, not, not confuse things and just not extend it.
We're in the business of educa- as I've said, we are in the business of educating students and when I've lost some of that time, I think we have an obligation to try to gain that, that instructional time back.
Yes.
Because I, I think long-term, if we don't, then we're gonna pay for it next year and the year down the road, still in terms of just lost instruction.
And, and, I'm sorry.
Now, Dr. Markley made mention, uh, earlier of the, uh, Regional Superintendents Meeting last week, um, that I attended for Dr. Markley, um, and they were all talking about the graduation issue and they are not planning on moving their graduations either. And most of them lost more time than we did. They're planning to have their graduations, um, at the same time. And a lot of it has to do with venue as well, and I understand we got a venue issue as well, so... It is not unusual across the region that people are keeping their graduation dates the same.
And again-
I was a question that, I was just thinking about the instructional time that we're trying to put back in that seems like we're losing.
Well, I think it puts, it does put, um, stress and, more stress and pressure on our seniors, but I would hate to put more stress and pressure on all of our students, um, much less the seniors. Uh, you know, if we have to do it to just the seniors, then, then so be it. I think that you all have worked very hard on trying to come up with a reasonable compromise and I appreciate it. Um, we did get a lot of feedback on this and, um, I spent a lot of time talking to principals and, and teachers and parents and students. Um, you know, I had three students that were affected by this, uh, at Cape Fear and, um, what I realized was it's not just, what happened there was they, they didn't make up the time. And, um, so what happens is it, the onus become, it, it transfers itself to the student. And, um, you're relying on the student to make up that, that, that content on their own time and you're relying on the student to have the ability to absorb all of that content and all that material themselves. So, that's a big ask for every single, all 26,000 students that we have. So to me, this is not, it's, nothing's gonna be perfect. We had an extraordinary situation happen that I, I hope and pray will never happen again, but we can't count on that. So I think that we go with the best option that we feel will benefit the most of our stu- the mo- most of our students and then we plan for this in the future.
Yes.
And keep going.
And, and what I would say to this, and, and Dr. Mark, excuse me, Dr. Holliday spoke, um, very much to this, is that we wanted to give consideration to the, to the families of our graduating seniors um, in, in what plans that they've already pu- put in place, because again, this was within no one's con- control. Speaking specifically to our students at, um, that, that are on the campus of WECs and, and Isaac Bear and C-Tech, they've done things within their schedules to try to recapture some, some, um, time back and I can speak specifically to that when we get to those calendars. Um, but, um, for WECs, for example, they're extending their instructional blocks. Also with both of the calendars that I've presented, we will make adjustments for interim report, semester breaks, um, end of grading periods, um, when report cards go out. So we have shifted and adjusted all the dates to provide as much balance as, as possible. Um, adding the 20 minutes gives us about 36, 37 instructional hours back, but as the, the, um, Ms. Brobeck spoke, it, it is very much piecemeal for the high school. Um, definitely in the elementary school, you can capture a block of time and maybe add it to your math block or create an intervention period. You can definitely do some, um, creative things in, in middle school as well. Much, much more challenging for the high school. Um, but again, this additional five days would be on the traditional calendar only, um, well, for, on the traditional calendar and also the pre-K calendar, because they follow the traditional calendar for the most part.
We're heading into our legislative season and as we're looking at priorities, again, calendar flexibility, which has been on our list now for eight years-
Yes.
Needs to-
It is also on the North Carolina School Board Association's legislative agenda.
Um, and I will say, um, and as Ms. Kavanaugh, who is the Chair of that committee, um, this year we actually will have greater flexibility, simply by where the required beginning and end dates fall and the calendars that we are currently working to reduce for 1920 will have six teacher workdays built into the structure of the calendar. Right now, we have maybe one and all of those other workdays sit outside the calendar, so they really don't help you. But the calendars we are proposing for 1920 would have six days that sit within, within the year. That was not an option for the development of these, these calendars, for the most part.
When putting the calendar together, where August 25th falls is really the determination of, of the flexibility in your calendar. These last two years, last year and this year, have been, where August 25th has fallen, have been probably the two most inflexible years in terms of what you can do for calendar.
Yeah.
How about the year-round calendar?
So the year-round calendar, what we're recommending for them is half-days to full-days, 10/26, which we've already done, um, 12/14, um, February 22nd, and then we'd add back one day for, um, April 22nd. Um, for those students, um, their, um, well, Hurricane Florence fell during the bulk of their intercession, so they were not scheduled to be in, in school during that time. So they did not miss as many days, um, and that is also what allowed us to place Mary C. Williams at Cottington for a week and Gregory at Snipes for a week while we worked on getting those buildings up and running. So it really did serve us where those intercessions fell. So their impact would be pretty minimal. We are shifting their, um, report card dates and end of nine-week dates and progress report dates so that the semesters and the nine weeks are balanced, but we are not adding days to the end of their calendar or extending their school day. It, that would only be in reference to the traditional and the pre-K calendar. Um, we also have another calendar, I mean, we have seven. Um, we have Restart and with Restart, we are adding back two vacation days, 12/21, 4/22, and we're adding back five intercession days. Um, their intercession comes a little bit later, I think I'm saying it right, yeah, later than the year-round calendar and so those students did miss, um, a little more time than the year-round calendar, but having the flexibility of intercession, again, built into their calendar, we're able to capture those days for those students and add back instruction that way. Um, again, the pre-K calendar would follow whatever you decide in terms of the, um, year-round calendar, excuse me, the traditional calendar, so the pre-K calendar would, would follow that. Um, WECs, we've added some half-days to whole-days and we're adding back one teacher workday on, um, December 19th and we're adding back, um, um, a vacation day on, um, December 20th. For Isaac Bear, they are extending their Monday, Tuesday, Thursday classes to 80 minutes. I think they're currently 75. Um, on Wednesday, P.E. classes are shortened to 60 minutes. I think originally they were 75 minutes. And then full days on Fridays from half-days. So they are adding that time within their existing structure, because of course, they parallel the, the, the university schedule, so UNCW's schedule. And they are also reducing their lunch periods. They had previously smart lunches and so they're going from two lunch periods to one and capturing that time back into their schedule.
Any feedback, getting any feedback on that?
No. What is unique about WECs, Isaac Bear and C-Tech is that they really own their calendars um, and those principals work extremely well with their teachers to create calendars and schedules that work for their children, their teachers and their families. And so we, we really rely on them to, to provide that direction for us.
What we're asking for tonight is approval of all of the calendars except for the one that originally talked about adding 20 minutes to the day.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am if you are.
I think that we adopt the recommended calendar changes as presented by Mrs. Smith.
And that would be the fi- adding five days on the traditional and pre-K calendar and the other calendars as presented.
Correct.
And not adding the minutes.
Not adding the minutes.
Had everybody so upset.
Right. Now here's a second. I have a second. Any further questions or discussion?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
When this originally came out, obviously we got a lot of feedback. Um, I talked to a bunch of parents that were actually, um, from an elementary perspective, were actually in favor about adding the time to the beginning and the end. Um, I think if you were to look at, um, where the, um, the ratios of, um, parents versus staff, I would say that parents were much more receptive to the 10 minutes on the front, 10 minutes on the back and staff was, um, against the 10 minutes on the front. I think they had, um, a lot of staff felt that we didn't need to make up any of the days um, and then the other option would be that five-day period. So I actually, knowing that, a couple of weeks ago, I, I decided to call a bunch of principals and, um, from a parent's, it was funny, talking with the principals from a parent's perspective, they understood that probably the 10 minutes before to 10 minutes after was probably better, but from a staff perspective, um, that the staff was actually, whereas they didn't want to make up the time, would be more in favor if there was gonna be an option, um, for that five days in, in, at the end of the year. Um, I've heard a lot of people that, from a lot of people saying that we didn't make up the time, whether it be parents or staff, but, you know, as a, as a school board, as we sit here, as Dr. Markley said, our job is to make sure that, um, those children are, are getting, you know, the, the education that they need. And I, I see that if we don't, um, add time in, whether it be, um, the five days at the end of the year, the ones that are gonna be hurt the most are probably the ones that need it the most. Because, you know, you have a lot of these students, um, that, you know, come from, from families that are able to, to give, um, to their children and during these, you know, during these three, three weeks that they were out, um, they were doing, you know, they, they continued with, with the books or, or teaching, especially from an elementary perspective. And i- if we don't, as a board, um, make sure that the ones that, um, were, maybe weren't able to continue that education, I, I think we're really letting down and almost furthering the gap. So, I mean, I, I understand, um, all sides of the equation, uh, whereas I would, I would rather have the 10 minutes, beginning 10 minutes at the end, because it provides more instructional time, especially for elementary, because that was kinda getting lost in the shuffle. Dr. Smith, you said that 10 minutes for elementary is important, because you can add a 10 minute to a reading block, a 10 minute to a math block and from an elementary perspective, which is almost 50% of our students, that's important time for a kid to sit there and read a book, for a kid to, to, you know, do math or, or whatever it's gonna be. But I do understand from a, you know, from a high school perspective, it's tough because of the semesters and all of that, so... I, I just, I, it's a compromise, the five days. Um, obviously as Ms. Seepet said, it's not a perfect world, um, you know, w- we have to adjust to, to what was thrown at us. Um, so I, I, again, I, I understand the compromise and, and I'm, I'm willing to-
And we are adjusting the testing schedule, especially at the high school level. What about at the elementary level, will they be delaying the testing?
Yes, ma'am. It, the testing will occur, um, for our semester classes, the last five days of the, the school year and for our year-long courses, which are what we have in our elementary schools, the last 10 days. So that will be the testing window.
So it's not tacking on five days of-
No, not after testing. So we will, we will add five days of instruction and then move the testing to the very end of the year. Yes, ma'am.
What about those, um, the juniors that are maybe taking the same exams that the seniors are?
So they would just test separately?
Okay.
Yes. So, so we are receiving, um, special permission to test our seniors early. Only the seniors, yes.
Everybody out there needs to step up and volunteer, 'cause they're gonna need a lot of volunteers this year.
Well, actually, they've done away with the need, uh, there's no proctor requirement anymore.
No?
Good. The State, uh, State Superintendent did away with that.
Yes.
Well, what another problem with the elementary transportation issues with other schools based upon that?
Probably roving proctors who will pop in and out of classrooms.
That's all you did, that's all you did was transportation. You had Minister of the Elementary Day and not to the hospital.
Right, so I mean, it would compa-
You can't do it either.
Right.
So, and, another thing that Dr. Holliday just reminded me of is that many of our seniors, well, typically none of our seniors are taking any of their required EOCs. It is the North Carolina final exams that the seniors are participating in. Um, so it's, 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 it's very important assessments, um, but they're, they're not the, the end-of-course exams that we typically give.
The school grade tests typically are freshman and sophomore tests.
Yes.
Biology, English 1, English 2, Math 1.
But it is district policy, as well as state policy, that these exams count 20% of their final grade. Um, so, you know, we don't wanna graduate someone and they don't come back and then we say, "Oopsie," after the fact, um, that would not be good. So, we would like to be able to test those young people early.
They wait back up for a minute, you said something about no proctors.
The State, Karen's gonna come up and do a report, she can give a little more detail, but the, the State Superintendent has looked at some of the requirements and one of the things that they found was that proctors were not a legal requirement. Uh, they're a good practice and we'll still accept volunteers and we'll probably go to more like roving proctors and, and something like that. But for a lot of our schools, particularly those without active PTAs, it was all, it was hard to find proctors.
Yeah.
Uh, so, but we still believe that, just in terms of test security-
Best practice.
It's, it's a good practice to have folks in the building, but if I can't get eight proctors for eight classrooms and I can get four, then they can robe in, they can help students who need to go to the restroom and do those kinds of things that a proctor typically does.
Right, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the extension of the school calendar for five days for the traditional and pre-K calendar and the calendars as presented for WEC, uh, Isaac Bear, uh, C-Tech, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's more than the five, five days, though, right?
Well, okay.
It's the additional of the-
It's the, obviously, the other adjustments.
All right, then I'll be clear about that. Then the, the five days plus the additions as presented for the traditional and pre-K calendars, along with the other calendars as been presented.
And those schools, they, they came up with the changes themselves, WEC, uh, C-Tech and Isaac Bear.
So yes, we have-
That's what they wanted.
Yes, these are the re- the recommendations they made. We also have Restart, Restart Pre-K and then Lake Forest Academy, just if we need to-
All right, so now I'm gonna go back. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is Middle and High School redistricting, Appendix H. Mr. Anderson, have you got it memorized?
Tanya, from, uh, "School Calendar to Redistricting Maps," I am truly sorry. The, uh, actually, we're not gonna show a lot of maps tonight. Um, the purpose of, of tonight is to share with the board, uh, what we have already shared with the public and, um, and what we'll be sharing, uh, or listening to input, uh, from the public at our, at our forums scheduled for, uh, for this, uh, this week and next week, so... But, uh, we wanted to, uh, share these with you tonight, just to make sure that, uh, we're all on the same page. Uh, there was only one slight modification done at the middle school, uh, which, which I'll show you.
Because tomorrow night's process will look like forum process has in the past, uh, with one exception. I've asked Eddie to come up and just show the old maps and show the, uh, suggested changes to the new maps. Uh, so that, if the public's there, they have those as reference, they'll be posted there. It's really an input session, uh, so we've, we've done everything up to this point and now it's this public input process. Uh, then we'll take that information and make, if we need to make a further round of adjustments, we will. We're still looking at the December meeting, work session, to process all of the comments that we've got so that we can make a, a recommendation in January. So this is what, what you see tonight is what Eddie will show tomorrow night.
Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned to you earlier, in the past, the public and the new incoming board preferred that the new incoming board have the forums and participate in the decisions of redistricting. Wouldn't it be best if we postponed the forums to allow the new incoming board to host those forums?
Well, two things. Number one, I will entertain such a motion. I was going to ask, uh, Ms. Adams to notify the four newly-elected board members to advise them that these hearings were being held, when they were being held, where they were being held, and invite them to come and hear that, the, the, the same discussion we heard. Now-
That's a last-minute notification, though.
Well-
We've, we've published that notification for over a month.
Yeah, I, I'm simply saying is that, uh, you know, they will then have, they will have the opportunity to hear everything that, that we have heard. If they, next month, when they come on, if they decide they want to further postpone things, that, that's up to them.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that-
I mean, I'm, I want to extend, and I, you know, it, all this has come about in the last two days, so I, uh, I want to extend the opportunity to them to come here, because it's not an, it's not an interaction, interactive discussion. All it's going to be is hearing what the public has to say. So, uh, I want to extend an invitation to the four newly-elected, uh, board members to, to attend this one and the other two, to be able to also get the same information that we would be hearing if we were staying on the board, that we would be hearing to consider our decision.
I hope that they will be able to attend, because-
Well, I hope they will, too.
They'll be, they'll be coming on the board without that information if that's, well-
With all due respect, they've been, I mean, one of them's here. They, they've been all, to all of our meetings, I know that Ms. Justice-
We will record the meetings as well.
Yes.
And we're more-
They know what's going on, that, we've, we've, this has been 16 months in the making.
I'm happy to extend a one-on-one invitation for any of the new board members if they feel like they need additional information. Plus, like I said, we do have a, we are planning, I think, on the 18th, a full work session where this is the topic.
The 18th of November or December?
That'll be after the three meetings.
Right.
Yeah.
After the December meeting, right. So anyway, go ahead, Ms. Adams.
Thank you. Um, I did include the, uh, the guiding principles again. Um, this is the Middle and High School redistricting timeline, uh, that was revised by the board in October. Um, tonight, uh, we're presenting, uh, the, the plans that will be, uh, available for public input. Uh, public forums will be held this month and, uh, as Dr. Markley mentioned, uh, we do have planned a redistricting work session- And as Dr. Markley mentioned, we do have planned a redistricting work session with the board for December. Public forums, the dates, times, and locations are posted here. The first one is tomorrow night at Williston Middle School at 5:30. And the other two are scheduled for next week. As I mentioned, we have not made any changes at this point. We're, this is the high school plan. It is still version two. To provide you with some update from questions at the last meeting, there was 21 comments received. I didn't have the information on October 9th. But since September 3rd, there was only one additional comment received online regarding our high school redistricting. And that comment was in support of the high school redistricting proposal.
Mr. Anderson, that version two has remained fairly consistent since we adopted it back in March, correct? There hasn't been any major changes.
That's correct.
Just for note, tomorrow night, we also will have computers set up for folks who don't want to go to the mic and speak and want to type their comments at that session.
Excellent.
The, as Mr. Wortman said, this version two originally presented at the work session on August 21st. And so, and then, again, at the regular meeting, October 8th, which I think was October 9th. I put in the presentation for you, the two side-by-side maps. We have larger maps, blowups of this, that will be posted and available at the work session, I mean, at the public forums. And these are also available online, which is perhaps the easiest way to look at it and where you can zoom in to particular addresses. And just for review, this is a summary of all the moves proposed. And the high school numbers proposed in 690 students would affect 690 students, which is 8.93 of our high school population. The capacity comparisons, again, are given with an, in version two, it's an average of 110 students over capacity at each school. And the free and reduced comparison, you can see, has been reduced further. I think from version one, the average was 37%. The average now is 34%. With the middle school plans, we did, since the last presentation, there were 13 additional comments. Most of those comments were regarding desire for eighth-grade privilege. Three comments were concerning the change from Roland-Greys to Williston. And the remaining comments were comments that had already been presented to the board. So, to date, we have received 174 comments with regards to our middle schools. As I mentioned, we did make a couple of slight changes based on your comments regarding middle school from the last presentation and really to address two issues that you thought were important and that we agreed. These changes would better balance, better balance our enrollment between schools, primarily at Trask, and also provide a better free and reduced balance between schools. I'll go through the maps and I'll point out where these changes were made. Just for summary, the, this is a list of all of the proposed moves. At the middle school level, the moves would affect 641 kids, which is 11.78%. In the proposed moves from Murray to Myrtle Grove, we're not recommending any changes. Roland-Greys to Myrtle Grove, there were no changes. Roland-Greys to Williston, there are no changes. Trask to Holly Shelter, there are no changes. Noble to Holly Shelter, there are no changes. Noble to Williston, we were adding study areas 207, 208, and 209, which brings the total number of students moved to 67. In Holly Shelter to Trask, we added study areas 38 and a newly created study area, 39A. This is actually the Hanover Reserve neighborhood. And in pulling out 39A, it added more students to Trask. But the Hanover Reserve neighborhood, we also anticipate significant growth that neighborhood, in that neighborhood. So, more students would be assigned to Trask in the future. Williston to Noble, we added study areas 158 and 159. And Williston to Myrtle Grove, this is the downtown satellite. We added study area 186 to expand that. Myrtle Grove to Roland-Greys, there was no change. Williston to Roland-Greys, we added study area 216. And in the final, final map, Williston to Holly Shelter, there was no change. So, in looking in summary, and I know that's a lot of information, a lot of maps, and you can look at that. And as I mentioned, this whole month of November is really for input from the public. But it also gives you an opportunity to look at this presentation, these maps, in a little more detail. And we'll be glad to answer any questions you have. And we'll have the opportunity to discuss it in more detail at our work session in December. But in summary, in version four, remember, our goal was to, one of our goals was to better balance the enrollment. And I think we've achieved that. The average for the high schools is 118 students over. From version one, it was 135. So, we have reduced that. The range from the most overcrowded to the least overcrowded in version one was 75. We've reduced that to 39. So, you know, I think we're getting a much better balance at our, of enrollment at our high schools. In looking at the free and reduced comparison, again, I think we've improved that as well. The free and reduced percentages are shown. I apologize if version four is not listed in that column, but it is the far column on the right, shown there in pink. The average free and reduced among our middle schools now is at 40%. That has been reduced from 42% average in version one. And each time we've made some adjustments, we've continued to bring that average down. The other thing is the range from the highest to the lowest has reduced from 30% to what is now at 22%. So, again, I think we are, we're bringing those schools closer together in their capacity comparisons and in the free and reduced comparison.
Mr. Anderson, I would say, I mean, I know the Holly Shelter and Williston are still high. I do appreciate, because I know I've been the one that's been talking to you over and over, trying to get that number down as low as possible. So, I do appreciate the work that we've done and to continue to lower the free and reduced number at Williston. And then, obviously, Holly Shelter, I think we anticipate, what did the school score this year?
Was it B?
Was it B? So, a little bit less worried about Holly Shelter because of their performance. The only thing I would say is, I know in the last board meeting, we had a discussion about trying to do some different things at Williston, whether it be start some immersion programs, a coding immersion program, potentially some middle school IB programs. And the population at Williston that we have now at 118, which is, I think, the average. I just wonder that, I don't want to start those immersion programs and have 40 or 50 kids come into Williston for those immersion programs, and we haven't considered building in adequate space in that school. And then, once again, if we start the immersion programs in a year or a year and a half and when the elementaries come in, we would have to actually move kids again. So, we're going to have a school at Williston, and let's say you have 30 or 40. There are going to be 150 people over capacity, which is a lot more. So, that's the only, looking at the numbers, that's the only thing that I'm worried about, that we haven't built in enough space into Williston to allow to some cool programs that we may be able to do.
Any other questions or comments?
Also, looking forward to seeing some fresh eyes on this. You guys have been looking at it for close to a year. We'll get some fresh eyes on it. We'll get some community input. And maybe they've seen something we've missed and looking forward to it.
I assume since you have it on for all business, we need to vote to make this the.
Not really. I mean, this is what we're going, this is not the final map.
I know it's not the final map, but do you need our approval to make this the map that Mr. Anderson.
Well, we were just, we were bringing it really more for information and perhaps we should have put it under that item. We've already put the maps out there and we're already collecting public input. But we wanted to make sure that you have the same information that the public does. We're all speaking to the same, you know, the same maps.
I don't think we should vote on it yet. I think it's important that we allow public input before we vote on anything.
Well, I mean, the only thing I was asking is whether or not we vote to say, these are the maps now that go out.
I don't think it's necessary because at that point, it looks like an endorsement. It's really just part of the process.
Okay. All right, I'm just asking. Just asking.
I do appreciate that.
All right. New business. First item is a resolution to support the renovation of Buckhardy Field appendix, aye. I was suppo, we, Mr. Shell and I went to a presentation by the gentleman who owns the Sharks. And he has a very ambitious program to add about, what, 1,200 seats, maybe, to Buckhardy Field, to put a, for lack of a better description, a canopy over the seats, create some box seats and raise the, lower the dugouts and put in some, actually, the biggest thing I think is putting artificial turf on the field. And it's, at this point in time, it's not costing us anything. It'll be between the city, the county, and the gentleman. And he was supposed to send me some information about just simply either having a resolution or drafting a memorandum of support. But I will be honest, he has not done so yet. I will try to get up with him. It has been suggested we have these forums. And if we can get the information, I would like to potentially bring it back to you. I will give, I gave you the packet, didn't I? Didn't I?
I think Dr. Holliday has it.
If, you know, maybe if copies could be made, I don't know if they'd go out tomorrow, but if copies could be made of that packet, of that information, to go into the packet that the superintendent sends out either tomorrow or next Thursday would be, well, actually, it'd be good if it could go out tomorrow, in tomorrow's packet. Okay. So, that everybody would have an opportunity to see what the gentleman is proposing. I mean, it's about a three-and-a-half million dollar expansion for the first phase and then maybe another million and a half. But he is not asking, and the only reason we're involved is because New Hanover, that is New Hanover's baseball field. And the feeling was if we wanted to support, it would just add some additional support to upgrading that facility. But especially the whole, in my opinion, the whole idea of having an artificial turf for that field to be played on and all. So, anyway, so that's, we'll just move on beyond that at this point in time.
Let me add.
Okay, yes, sir. Go ahead.
In addition to that, I agree with that, that what they were asking of the Legion Stadium Commission is to create a committee to study the feasibility of doing it. And so, the devil's in the details of that, at the end of the day, and who pays for it. You know, whether you talk about the city, typically, the county ends up with a double share because it's the county and the schools, and the county paying for the schools. And then you have the Sharks. And then you have a lease agreement that would be renewed as part of the Sharks arrangement. So, there's a fairly significant amount of dynamics, Dr. Holliday, that's in that. So, but I think Ed and I agree that it was certainly worth looking at.
I think so. And, I mean, it would. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Then the next item on that then is Wilmington Health Access for Teens High School Agreement, appendix J. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our routine renewal of that agreement with Quat Coastal Horizons for having our school-based health clinics on our high school campuses. Basically, through your vision, we've been able to get those at all four high schools. And this is just a renewal of that agreement. We got a little pushback this year because of the hurricane. So, we would ordinarily bring this to you earlier, but that, not both of our organizations kind of for a loop. So, we're bringing it to you tonight. Just simply ask that you approve it.
Need for approval?
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, New Hanover County School Advisory Council for Exceptional Children, the ACES membership. Appendix K, Ms. Askew.
Thank you. I'm asking that you approve the membership recommendations for returning and new members for the advisory council for exceptional students. We have a total of 13 returning members, seven new members, and of course, our one board representative, Ms. Lisa Eastep.
Need for approval?
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any questions or discussion?
Ms. Eastep, do you have anything you want to say on this?
I think it's safe to say that this has been a year of transition in ACES or at ACES with ACES. But I'm hopeful with the new members that we've taken a good turn. So, there's been some really good discussion, a lot of dynamic discussion that maybe we haven't had in the past. So, I'm really looking forward to the new members coming on and doing some great things. So, it's been great. Julie's led a lot of great discussions, answered a lot of questions, as have her staff. So, it's really been, it's been, it's been good.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, 2017, 2018 Annual New Hanover County Annual Accountability Data Presentation, appendix I. Ms. Smith.
Yes, annually.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. Annually, the district brings forth the presentation to the board and the public on the academic performance of the students within our district. This evening, as in the past, we have with us Mrs. Karen Green, the Director of Testing and Accountability for New Hanover Schools, to share this information with you. And as she comes up, I'll just close and say that we are extremely proud of the hard work of our children, teachers, administrators, school and district staff in achieving these outcomes. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you once again for the opportunity to present our annual data. Just some highlights overall. We continue to surpass the state on performance on all of our assessments. And to date, we have the highest graduation rate at 86%, which is the highest in our history. And we've had significant improvements in English Language Arts and in mathematics in grades. grades three through eight.
Let me interrupt. Mr. O'Brien's sitting over there, he's our secondary director, he has done phenomenal work along with the testing folks, um, working on just the, the verification process around that graduation report. So, I'd like to publicly thank Al, along with the testing department, for their work in that.
Thank you.
He's been, he's been of great assistance. There's a lot of documentation that goes along with it, that's behind the scenes, that no one really sees, and he's been working with the principals on a daily basis all year long, um, to get that documentation correct.
Can you talk about the verification process? What does that mean?
So, the graduation rate, um, is not necessarily the number of children that walk across the stage, it's the number of, it's the, it's the percent of children that finish in four years. But if a child transfers out, or moves out of state, or goes to private or homeschool, they're all still considered in your cohort, even though they're not in membership in twelfth grade, the graduation year. So, if a child moves out of state, and we're not sure where they are, because we didn't get a records request, they automatically count against our graduation rate. If a child moves out of the country, and we don't have documentation from the parent that they're leaving the country, they count against our graduation rate. If we have a child that goes to homeschool, but the, um, parent from homeschool doesn't provide us appropriate documentation, then they also count against our graduation rate. So, we have a lot of children that come in with their parents to withdraw, and there's the withdrawal process in our district and some documentation, but then there also has to be records requests that are sent, or some other types of documentation from those receiving schools in order for us to remove those children from our cohort. And that's where Mr. O'Brien has really come in to work with the principals, the graduation coaches, and Dr. Pinto, to really get, get that documentation.
You could, you could have a student in ninth grade who transfers out, he starts the year in your cohort, goes to another school, but if the school's not careful about tracking records, he may be graduating in California, but if we don't have the proof that he transferred, he shows up as a dropout in that report.
I have a quick, I have a-
You're too kind now.
If a child, if a child comes into our school district, and he has, he enters in the ninth grade, but he comes in from somewhere else where he's already been in the ninth grade one time, does that count against us?
When we enroll children, their first year in ninth grade with us is their ninth grade entry year.
Even if they've been in the ninth grade already?
If they're-
Somewhere else?
In another state, yes.
Yes.
If we've determined that based on their, um, courses that they've taken, we're putting them in ninth grade, then that will be their first year in ninth grade with us.
Okay. All right, fine, thank you.
Since our department is the one that uploads the codes that removes the children from the cohort, not only do we have to have verification, but we have to collect all the documents. So, after students graduate, we have to visit every school and make sure that they have the correct documentation before I upload at the end of June. So, it's quite a lengthy process that the student support team, um, and Mr. O'Brien has really helped us, um, secure that.
Are you ready for a motion?
No.
No, this is just, um, for information, really, and I don't think I did a good job communicating that, so that's why it's under new business, so I'm, sorry, I take responsibility for that. So, just some annual, um, report contents, we're gonna go over the components and measures of the new accountability model, I'm just gonna go over those briefly, because we could plan another presentation where we would just talk about the new accountability model. Then, we're gonna go over just some district versus state overall performance, then I'm gonna drill it down to our EOGs in middle school, and elementary, and our high school EOC data. Then, we're gonna talk more specifically about our graduation, um, rate for different student groups, because we had several student groups, including students with disabilities, that made great improvements in the graduation rate. Then, we're gonna look at how, um, our neighboring friends did, other urban districts, and then, um, similar-sized districts, as well as some charter school data. Then, we're gonna drill down even further and look at some trend data on how we are doing in math and reading, and how we've been doing over the past four years. Then, we're gonna look at some additional career and college readiness measures, particularly , um, relevant in high school, and then our latest SAT scores. So, in the North Carolina Accountability Model, um, the components for, um, elementary and middle are end-of-grade tests in math and reading. We do test children at the end of each grade, in grades three through eight in math and reading, and then also in science in grades five and eight, and then any of our children that are taking, um, end-of-course assessments, high school courses that require an end-of-course assessment in middle school, um, those scores also count in the accountability model. And in BOLD is the new one. We've always, um, assessed our English, um, as a second language children on a test called ACCESS, and it really gauges their English language acquisition, how well they're learning to read, write, speak, and listen. Um, but previously, that information was just provided for teachers and for parents, for teachers in planning for instruction, and then for parents in terms of information and what they can do to help their children. But now, English language progress is part of our accountability model. And in high school, we have several more components in addition to our end-of-course tests, graduation rate factors into that, and math course rigor. Um, the expectation is students are taking rigorous math courses, and in North Carolina, it's the percent of students enrolled in grade twelve passing North Carolina Math Three. Then, also, the ACT, all eleventh graders free of charge participate in the ACT in eleventh grade, and we define proficiency as the percentage of students meeting the minimum UNC requirement, which is a composite of seventeen. Then, also, another ACT test, it's called the Work Keys Test, it really does measure those soft skills that employers require, um, to make sure that, um, professionals are, are proficient in their jobs, like math, reading, being able to look at complex diagrams and interpret them. Um, and for our career and technical education students, if they have four units in a concentrator area such as business, or finance, or childcare, or hospitality, then they participate in the Work Keys Assessment, and if they score a silver or higher, um, they're considered, um, career-ready, and they get a certificate that they can take on to employment. One of the new measures this year, and I bolded it, it's called AWA, and it really stands for ACT Work Keys Assessments. The state is now combining those two measures, and they'll report that out as a combined measure. And so, we'll have a graph for that later in the presentation. And then, in high school, again, we have EL Progress, um, and it's the percent of those ESL students that are making progress on that access test that measures their English language acquisition. So, when we talk about asking ourselves how students are doing, um, there's really two things that we're asking. We're asking, are they meeting the mark when they participate in these assessments at the end of their course, at the end of the year, after a year's worth of instruction? Are they meeting the mark? And that mark is called proficiency, were they proficient? But the other thing that we have to ask ourselves, and it's kind of like a check and balance, is, are they making progress? Are they making growth? Have they moved from one year to the next? And so, the performance is measured in two different ways, in terms of proficiency, and then in growth. So, performance is reported out as achievement levels, achievement levels one through four, and achievement levels three through five, excuse me, the percent, percentage of students who score achievement levels one through five. Um, that was a change that occurred two years ago, so I apologize for that. But proficiency is considered levels three through five. Grade level proficiency is considered level three, that means a student met minimal requirements for that grade level. Um, achievement levels four and five surpass that grade level expectation, and they're considered by the state to be career and college-ready, on that path for career and college readiness. The school performance composite is what we look at, we look at the, the one score for the school. So, the performance composite for our district, we have one for that. We have a performance composite for every school, and that's where we come up with the school performance grade. And then, in terms of growth, um, it's an indication of the rate at which students are, um, achieving over the past year, and the expectation is if the child has a year's worth of instruction, then they should have a year's worth of growth. And so, the way that we delineate that is, either the school has exceeded growth expectations, met growth expectations, or did not meet growth expectations. And Dr. Smith mentioned some of that when she was talking about, um, the priority schools in terms of having special plans if they were a D or F school and only met growth expectations. So, if student, if a school meets growth expectations, that's a good thing, because that means they grew a year for a year's worth of instruction. So, this slide is an attempt to, um, briefly discuss the changes in the accountability model.
And we're having more in-depth ESSA piece next month.
So, this is just a brief, because some of our numbers have dipped a little bit, and part of it's a function of the difference in the way that it's reported. Under the ready model, which is our old model, um, and I'm gonna go back and forth between the two, first-year ESL students did not have to participate in any reading or English tests. Under the new model, they have to participate in the tests, but that's just considered a baseline. It does not count towards the school's accountability. But then, at least the state has a baseline score upon which to calculate growth for the next year. Um, as I had said previously, under the old model, ACT and Work Keys were reported as two separate measures. Under the new model, they're combined. The access test, the English language acquisition test, under the old model, was not part of school accountability, it was just formative data for the teachers. Under the new model, the access scores may be included in the school performance grade. And I use the word "may" because it depends on the number of children in the school. Math course rigor is reported for graduates under the old model, math course rigor now is reported for students enrolled in grade twelve. So, it's not just the number of students who graduate, it's all students in seventeen, eighteen that were enrolled in grade twelve. The next one is about membership. There's some membership rules that we're gonna go into in the next presentation at a later time, um, but, membership rules under the old model only counted in growth. Under the new model, membership rules apply to both the growth and proficiency measures for students. So, did they make the mark? Did they make progress? And this is a good thing, because if I'm a classroom teacher teaching fifth grade science, and I have a student that moves in two weeks before the end of the school year, the expectation is that that student is going to participate in that assessment. And under the old model, that, that student's score would count in the school's proficiency, and that doesn't really seem fair, because the teacher has only had two weeks to work with the child. So, under, under S, under this new model, the membership rules, they have to be in membership at least half the semester or half the year in order for it to count for both proficiency and growth, and we're very pleased with that. North Carolina Math One, under the old model, was reported separately for middle and for high school. Under the new model, it's not. Under the new model, North Carolina Math One is only reported for grades nine through twelve. And this may seem misleading, but it's really a good thing, because we've been talking a lot about over-testing children, and under the new model, students enrolled in grade eight, if they're enrolled in Math One, no longer have to take the grade eight EOG, because they only have to take what they're enrolled in. They're taking Math One. But they combine that Math One and report it as a math, math grade six through eight, so we don't have a separate, um, Math One for middle school. We did run some numbers, so we have that information for you later in the presentation, however. And just wanted to go over some of these changes, so that when you see some dips, because the business rules have changed, and the way that things are reported publicly. So, I'm happy to report, and I'm starting with graduation rate, because that's the goal, no matter what grade children are in, is we're trying to get them ready to graduate, to go on to college or career. Um, and our goal for seventeen, eighteen was eighty-five, and we surpassed that at eighty-six. Um, we've got a lot of, a lot of people in the schools that have been working hard with individual children, counseling them, um, graduation coaches advising them, well, the EC staff has been doing with the students on the occupational course of study, with all the work hours, and making sure that they scaffold that, to make sure that they're meeting their work requirements annually, has just been, um, all contributing to, to the success of this, this improvement in graduation rate. Dr. Markley, is there something you'd like to say about that?
Next goal is ninety percent.
So, we're moving on up. Um, so, in terms of just breaking it down for different student groups, um, on the highlights, on the first couple slides, I said we were, we really increased with, um, students with two or more races, um, the English language learners, and then also our students with disabilities. The performance composite, remember, that's one number when you, when you combine all of the assessments, and that's your one performance composite. When you compare us over the past four years to the state, we continue to improve, and we continue to surpass the state.
You'll notice the state actually took a dip this year compared to us. We went up.
Then, on the end-of-grade and end-of-course assessments, um, we continue to surpass the state. When you look at, um, some of our regional counterparts, we're very competitive, um, we're either one or two when you compare us, um, against our regional, urban, or similar-sized districts.
If you remember last year, Sampson, I think, had us by a couple of points, and now they've only got us by point six, so, we'll, we'll, we'll pass them next year.
We're closing that gap. Um, and then, when you look at similar-sized and urban districts, um, we're extremely competitive, and very proud of, of our achieve, students' achievement.
Union County does not have a large urban center, like some of the other urban districts, more of a, a bedroom community for a lot of places.
And then, if you rank our schools by school performance grade, and the school performance grade is based on the way that we get that one letter grade, is they take all the tests, their performance composite, and then factor in a growth measure, and that's how they, they arrive at the school performance score and the school performance grade, and we've highlighted the, um, charter schools, so that you could see when we rank them, how they fit in.
You'll notice that there's not a charter school in the top ten.
Who is South, who's South project charter? I never heard of it.
It's, uh, it's the expansion of the Roger Bacon School that was in Brunswick County, it's there, it's down in the south end of the county.
Oh, okay.
And, um, most of these charter schools don't have the diversity, you know, that, that, that we have in our district. And then, I wanted to show you just some trend data over the past four years. So, in English Language Arts, um, in grades three through eight, we're really improving, I mentioned that. And I didn't have a growth slide for this, but in every grade in English Language Arts, grades three through eight, our students either met or exceeded the growth expectation. Similar with, um, grades three through eight math. Again, beating and exceeding the growth expectation for each grade in grades three through eight. In grades five, science, we're continuing, um, to be competitive with the state, surpassing the state, and, um, as a district, we exceeded the growth expectation for grade five science. In grade eight, science, um, we dipped a little bit. What we've been trying to do is encourage students to access, um, some more high school courses in middle school, so that they're entering high school with some high school credits. And one of the things that we've been doing over the past two years is we've been blending earth environmental science, which is a high school science course, with science grade eight, um, and a lot of the skills and concepts overlap. The children have been accessing the majority of the environmental science through NCVPS, um, and then science eight through their science teacher. Um, this year, what we're doing, um, in order to, it just didn't seem to match for a lot of the kids, it wasn't a good match. So, this year, the grade eight science teachers have blended both courses, and they'll be delivering that in a face-to-face format, and the, in, under the leadership of Mr. O'Brien, the, um, Instructional Services Lead, um, Science Teacher, Katie Martin, has been working with the teachers on a, um, scope and sequence, to make sure that all of those, um, objectives are covered by one teacher. We feel like this is really gonna improve our science scores, and children are still entering high school with, with some high school credit. English two, we dipped just a tad. Math grades nine through twelve, and this is one of the reasons why I wanted to include that slide about the difference between the accountability models, because, see, now, we only publicly report Math One for high school. And part of that reason is under the S model, um, schools have to have meaningful differentiation, and that's where we come up with the school performance grades. But the, the scores that we report have to be for the students that took the assessments and participated in the coursework in that school. So, we can no longer combine Math One, um, in middle school with Math One in high school. So, we can no longer combine Math 1 in middle school with Math 1 in high school. So, in grades six through eight, when we reported the math, the Math 1 students who no longer have to take the end of grade in math in eighth grade, their scores were included in the math.
Yeah, we used to count the eighth grade Math 1 scores in the ninth grade school.
They got to bank them, so that the high schools could get credit for that, and under the new accountability model, we can only report what the students participated in in that particular school. So, I did have Dr. Murray, our data analyst, run some numbers for us, and Math 1 in grades seven and eight, our proficiency was 99 percent. So, if we had combined those numbers, we would see something differently, but we're not publicly reporting it.
So, that's the reason for the dip for this year?
Yeah, you take the eighth grade students out.
Yeah, and that's the reason the state dipped too. To biology, we're moving. One of the things that I didn't discuss, and I will, if we, when we do the next accountability model, is biology, in terms of growth, used to really help our high schools, and under the new S model, biology is not included. So, we may have seen across the state a dip in growth measures for high school, simply because biology wasn't calculated. And no one's happy about it. Some other career and college readiness indicators, specifically for high school, our graduation rate, ACT, the AWA is the combined ACT and work keys, and then the work keys assessment, and then, of course, the math course rigor. The math course rigor dipped for us, because we used, under the old model, we used to report math course rigor for graduates. But now, we have to report math course rigor for students in grade 12. And not all students in grade 12 are going to graduate, because some of them may be on an occupational course of study, or they may be a five-year student. Some of our students are on the extended content standards and have severe cognitive disabilities, so they're not accessing Math 3. They're accessing the coursework that's most appropriate for their developmental level. So, unfortunately, they automatically count against us, and so, that explains the dip, because we're not just reporting graduates.
But wouldn't that be the same for the state?
Yes.
Yeah, the state number went down as well.
And then, lastly, well, not lastly, close to lastly for high school, anyway. This is our latest, and it was just newly released in the past month, SAT scores for our district and the state, and we've continued to surpass the national and state-level averages, and all of our high schools continue to improve and have improved over the previous year. Career and technical education is a really important part of what we do in high school, and, of course, that starts in middle school. Even though it's not part of the accountability model, they have an accountability to the federal government, and so, we include in our annual presentation the wonderful work that they're doing. Their district proficiency on their end-of-course tests in high school was 80.4. They had 4,439 industry credentials awarded last year, which is a 130 percent increase over the previous year. And from the work keys assessment, 382 students were awarded career readiness certificates by demonstrating proficiency on the assessment, and so, they are able to go into employment with a certificate that's recognized nationally, that states that they're ready for employment in the work world. The second part of the report was something that was sent out earlier. It unpacks every school. Every school had its own little page, and that's kind of our district's school report In the essence of time, I just gave you the overall district-wide data, but you do have access to those individual school-wide reports. The North Carolina school report card is not going to go out until late January, early February, so that will be a little bit later than planned in previous years. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions or comments?
A lot of work, and we appreciate all the detailed information.
Guys, I wish we had had this report last month, but, once again, the hurricane delayed some information. But I can't say how proud I am of the growth and improvement we did as a district last year. So, for those of you who've been on the board, or who have been on this board, you really should take some pride in the work that our folks have done.
I do have a question.
Okay.
You talked about the career and technical aspects, and I assumed that's where students are taking a particular course. And as they are tested out in that course, I believe you said if they achieve certain proficiency, that they got a certificate on that course?
Yes.
And so, am I correct in assuming that they could take that certificate as they apply for a job, in heaven, as part of their, Dr. Welberst, here, their resume, so to speak? Whereas with CTEC, we're trying to put a child or a student into one of, I believe, six or seven categories with 60 different pathways, where they're landing into a job. So, that's more of a course study, let me say it another way, a job-related study, whereas the career tech that you're referring to is a specific course of study. Is that right?
That's probably a good way to put it. When you walk out of CTEC, you're going to have a certificate based on your course of study.
Right.
What these are are individual certificates. So, I took a Microsoft Word course.
Okay.
I'm now certified at Microsoft Word. And that's a recognized credential in California, New York, Chicago.
Right.
So, that you can put, I am certified Microsoft Word by some national agency. If I'm taking the plumbing course at CTEC, I'm coming out with that plumbing certification, which is a much more, which encompasses a lot more in that course of study.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, plus a nice thing there, I guess they would also have the other certificates too, for computer-type things they've done.
So, it's in combination, which is even more impressive.
Good.
Thank you.
As always, you dazzle us.
I'm extremely shy, so...
All right, I understand we do not have to take any action on this, so, moving on to the next item, class-size waiver request for all K-3 classes due to Hurricane Florence. Dr. Smith?
Yes, specifically, we are asking for approval of class-size waivers for Pond Valley Elementary, Parsley Elementary, College Park, and Castle Hain, due to the impact of Hurricane Florence on their facilities.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, FEMA resolution for designation of applicant's agent. Appendix N, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're requesting the board's approval of the attached resolution designating Fran Moles, my assistant and myself, as the applicant's agent and filing for federal assistance through FEMA.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Now, y'all are reliable, right?
Fran is.
Fran is.
Okay. All right. All right, any questions or discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Item G, designer selection for projects at various campuses pertaining to Hurricane Florence. Appendix O, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're requesting the board's approval tonight for design firms selected for various projects to assist us with Hurricane Florence repair and renovation. The firms consist of Becker Morgan Group, BMH Architects, LS3P Associates, REI Engineers, which is a roofing consultant, and Sawyer Sherwood and Associates PC.
Motion.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
I got a second? Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Does that enable you to, from a credential standpoint, to get reimbursement from FEMA?
This does not. This is pertaining to a state statute for selection of professional services. So, we go through a request for qualification process, and then, this is going to create kind of a preapproval of these firms to work on specific projects related to hurricane repair and renovations.
So, their fee is not likely to be paid for by FEMA?
Well...
Now, what you're doing is saying, these are the firms that if I need work, I can go to these firms and pick one of these. Then, their fees would be a FEMA reimbursable.
That's right. Okay. That answers.
So, all we're doing is creating a pool of qualified candidates.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. All right, next item on the agenda is correspondence.
Before we go to correspondence, I need some clarification on December meeting. It looked like we were moving it, and I've heard some other discussions.
I heard from Wayne that the statute requires us to meet on the first...
That's not what the statute said.
What did Wayne?
Wayne said that it's the first Monday of December, and that we can't hold...
What is the statute, Wayne?
The statute says that the new board members should be sworn in the first Monday in December. However, since your meetings have traditionally been on Tuesday, you've always done it the very next day, and that's been okay, because the board has not taken any action in that one-day delay. So, I was just pointing out that if you were to delay your meeting until the 11th, there would be a longer period of time in which the existing board really couldn't function until the new board members were elected. The only exception to that happened two years ago, when there was an election protest, and the election law says that the old board gets to continue to function until the protest is resolved and the Board of Elections certifies the result. But since, unless there's going to be a protest, then there is no authority for the old board to continue functioning beyond the first Monday in December.
I don't think there are any...
So, we can have your meeting on the 11th, but the board just couldn't do anything between the first Monday and the 11th. You couldn't have a student suspension hearing, for example.
I don't think there were any candidates that came within close enough to contest the outcome.
There was one that was 36 votes. They canvassed all the elections at one time.
The Board of Education?
They canvassed all the votes at one time.
Okay.
Because the last protest wasn't the Board of Election protest, the last election.
It was county commissioner last time. And so, based on the fact that they're going to have to obviously recount and canvass that election, it's within 36 votes, I was...
But would that affect us, since ours?
It does, because they certify all the election results at the same time. So, they can't certify specific county commissioner, Board of Elections. They have to certify them all at the same time.
Okay.
Well, instead of the 11th, is there another day? Because I cannot be here on the 11th. Like, today is a Wednesday.
I mean, if you want an extra day, that's fine. I mean, we can do the 5th.
But we really don't know, do we?
No, we were providing just a little...
I would assume there's going to be...
There's going to be something. It's 36 votes.
All right, so they all have to be certified at the same time, right? Okay. All right. All right.
Don said he could make it on the Wednesday.
Yeah, any day other than the 11th, it's just, I just can't get out of the 11th.
Can you see the 12th?
The day after our board meeting, too, would be available.
Oh, you mean the Wednesday?
Yes.
Well, no, but I think what he's suggesting is that...
If you wanted to move it to the 11th, 12th would be fine.
Even the 5th would not be...
Would be enough time, I guess.
Would be enough time. At least you give them another week.
Okay.
But you could make it on the 12th.
Oh, yeah, 12th would be the problem.
12th? 12th? Going once?
12th, 12th, fine.
Okay, all right, then we will...
Can I get that as a motion?
Do I hear a motion that we move the December meeting from December the 4th to December the 12th?
So, move.
I have a motion. Do I get a second?
Oh, I'm good. Did you get a second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a second. Any discussion?
Please, Mr. President.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The board meeting is now, will be on December the 12th.
Reminder, we will roll then, the following week, into a work session.
So, we won't be here. But anyway. All right, announcements.
I'm telling two people, okay?
Yeah. Well, you got three of you.
Just email me.
We also plan to have the legislative luncheon in there as well, because I think it's the 13th of December, because they go back, the first week, they go back, the first week in January.
That would be the board to let...
We typically do it in January, but the short set, the long session starts like January 9th. So, if we did it in January, it would have to be like the day after New Year's.
We don't miss it all the time, so...
Ed, if you want to come, if you're the Soil and Water Commissioner, come on.
I don't think I made it. I heard it got 900 votes, but there were 8,000 cast, so the Democrats succeeded in beating me out of that, because they were handing out a name.
It was a blue wave.
Well, no, they were, Democrats were actually handing out a name for that seat.
There were two slots.
I know there were two slots.
Okay, what's next?
Anyway.
I'm done. I got what I needed.
All right, all right. New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a redistricting public forum on Thursday, November the 8th, at 5:30 at Williston Middle School Audit... Is it auditorium or the gym?
Auditorium.
So, we come in through the gym? That's what somebody was telling.
Right there, across from each other.
There's a lobby between them.
Yeah.
Don knows where it is.
I know where it is.
Oh, I know where it's at. I just, I...
For our hearing tomorrow.
All right. Then, number two, New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a redistricting public forum on Thursday, November the 13th, at 5:30 at Holly Shelter Middle School Auditorium. Number three, New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a redistricting public forum on Wednesday, November the 14th, excuse me, at 5:30 at Ashley High School Cafeteria. Lastly, the next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, December the 12th, at 5:30 in the BOE Center. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
I have a motion and a second. We are adjourned.
How well do you know?